That's why we did it the way we did it. Okay. All right, welcome everyone. It's like we're...oh, still waiting for Trustee Witt.
Interesting, Witt and Trustee.
Who else?
Maybe I'll...you want me to go get him?
No, it's just Trustee Witt.
What?
Who else would it be?
Oh, you're right. I thought you... I should... You're right. Okay.
Well, we have a quorum. She'll be here in a minute. Something like that. Okay, so with that, we are going to go ahead and go to item 2.0 or 2.1, actions taken in closed session to be read out by Trustee Wright.
On a seven to zero vote regarding claim number 575834, the governing board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection claim as to matters alleged to have occurred after March 20, 2019 pursuant to Government Code Section 913 regarding any allegations occurring prior to March 20, 2019. The board directs that a notice of untimeliness in accordance with Government Code Section 911.3 be issued. The governing board further authorizes the chancellor or her designee to issue the appropriate notices.
Okay. Next, we have invocation led by Trustee Wright and pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Jay.
Our Father who art in heaven, we thank thee for gathering us together in this board meeting. We again thank thee for the freedoms that we have and to live in this great land of America. We ask thee to please continue to bless us with the love and protection. May we all be more unified in all that we do. We pray for those who are experiencing the fires in our great state of California. Bless them and help them. A number of fires have occurred in both the northern part and southern parts of California. This morning, we had a fire that occurred off the 405 freeway near the Getty Museum. We are thankful for our students and our dedicated faculty, administration, and staff in our community college district. Bless our Board of Trustees, our chancellor, and all in attendance in our decisions and efforts. We sincerely pray for guidance and do so humbly in his name. Amen.
And with a pledge of allegiance to our pride of our wonderful nation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united now, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, it would be 2.4 public comments, seeing no polls. We'll go ahead, or no slips, we'll go ahead and go...we're gonna advance 6.1 on the agenda in order to take care of issues that require us to pay lawyers to be here. So, we're gonna get them out of here quick. So, 6.1. We have ATEP sequoia addendum and project approval public hearing. So, at which point I will...before we have the public hearing, we need to hear from Chancellor Burke for an introduction of the item.
Sir Gable.
All right. So, this agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the public to provide the Board of Trustees with comments and input before the board considers, one, the certification of the sequoia addendum to the final joint program environmental impact statement, environmental impact report for the disposal and reuse of Marine Corps Air Station Tustin dated October 1996 as amended by the errata dated September 1998. And two, approval of the ground lease between South Orange County Community College District as landlord and ACS Development Group Incorporated, a California corporation, as tenant that permits the construction of a single two-story 50,000 square feet medical office building on a site owned by South Orange County Community College District at ATEP in the city of Tustin. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'm here to assist you.
Okay, pouring of personal privilege, somebody's got their high beams on in that parking spot right there. Somebody can shut that door, that would be great. Okay, so, does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Okay, seeing none, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. At this point, we'll entertain public testimony. Comments are not to exceed two minutes. Seeing no one wishing to comment. The public hearing is now closed. I really wish I'd gavelled for this. So, with that, Vice President Gable is not needing to answer any questions. Do I have any other further discussion on the matter from the board? All right, so item 6.1 is concluded. We will now move to item 6.2, the board's approval of resolution number 1926, which certifies the sequoia addendum. I have a motion from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We'll now move on to 6.3, the board's approval of resolution number 1927, which approves the ground lease and the tenant plan and authorizes the chancellor and/or vice chancellor of Business Services to, A, execute the ground lease and any related agreements to implement the project; B, approve the submittal of documents and applications to the city on behalf of the district; and C, approve matters related to the project which may be subject to district approval pursuant to the ground lease. I have a motion from Trustee Milchker, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no further requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, we have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So, with that, you all now get to sign the resolution. Hand that down. Okay, next, we have...we will now go back to board reports. 3.1, start with Trustee Lang.
You know, I had some prepared comments, but in the interest of time, because we're running late, I'm going to...
I'm gonna defer my comments this month.
Okay. Trustee Jay.
I attended two events. Thursday, I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition Legislative Meeting, meet and greet at the Memorial Care and Saddleback Medical Center. On Friday, October 25th, I attended the Saddleback Car Show on the Saddleback Campus. I enjoyed meeting the Autotech faculty. The enthusiasm of the instructors, both full-time and part-time, was unbelievable. I was so impressed by this faculty and students. They were just...it was wonderful. Tim, Marcia, and I got to help in handing out awards. Congratulations to those students who received the Autotech awards. The demonstrations were great. I saw a demo on how to remove dents from a car and from a bumper. This is very impressive. I particularly enjoyed the wrap demonstration. I had never seen anything like it. I had never heard of wrapping a car. This was fascinating to me. Don't miss next year's car show. It is a great fun event for everybody, especially for fathers and sons. The program is a fine example of the support the community college offers to our community. And I will not miss the next car show because I enjoyed it so much.
Okay. I guess I'll just go. Nothing really to report, other than the Economic Coalition event. That was nice, but not a lot in between. So, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, let's see if I can cover a little...well, some new ground. Well, you and I, many of us attended the Tustin State of the City address. That was a reception and a state of the city mayor Chuck Puckett, or Pukett. I'm not sure how you pronounce it. I hear it both ways. Our relationship with the city is good, has improved over the years. And in fact, ATEP was a part of their video presentation to those in attendance. Some of us attended the Orange County Business Council Workforce Development Annual Report. This is a pretty useful report. We're members of OCBC as a district, and I think both colleges are members. And some of the data really guides our programming, especially in...or at least in the CTE area and other areas as well. Bobby, Trustee Jay mentioned Saddleback College Second Annual Auto Show. I was really impressed. I kind of stumbled on it. I wasn't intending to go, but I was here on campus for another meeting. And I think that it's really...I'm really pleased with the progress of that program. The certificates we're handing out and actually the jobs that our students are landing in in-demand positions. And they seem to be excited about moving to ATEP. And I just...it was...it was really a great event. And if folks don't get a chance to go down there, you should. They're also moving into the area of electric vehicles and autonomous vehicles. So, it's really, I think, moving in an exciting direction. And then this Friday night, I'll be attending the Teacher of the Year Ceremony. I think we have two faculty who are being honored as nominees, is Michael Hoggett, I think, and Benjamin Meese from IVC. Michael's from Saddleback. That's it.
Okay, Trustee Wright.
I attended the homecoming event at Saddleback, for Saddleback College. On Saturday, October 19th, several members of the Board of Trustees and administrators, faculty, and staff were from the college for the district. And this was a wonderful event, I thought, the barbecue. I also stayed for the game. And I might say that Saddleback College was playing against Southwestern College, and they won 45 to 7. I might brag just a little bit about the football program. It's done very, very well this year. Right now, they're seven and zero. Last Saturday, they beat Orange Coast College on Saturday night in Costa Mesa. They're playing again this Saturday night, but they'll be doing it at the Mission Valley High School. They will be playing, I have it here, Golden West College at the Mission Valley High School. The Gauchos and the Rustlers are scheduled to start at 6 o'clock, or 6:00 PM. Also, I will be going to the...at the...for the banquet at the Disneyland... Teacher of the Year event that is happening at Disneyland Hotel. So, I'll be attending that.
Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, thank you. I too have attended numerous educational and exceptional college events since our last board meeting. Oh, sorry. I too have...sorry. I too have attended numerous exceptional college events since our last board meeting. I particularly want to highlight a few of them that I'll mention first. First, the Tustin State of the City. Our Public Information Officer, Letitia Clark, invited our board to attend that. And the city's video was creative and funny. I was delighted to see that the council now views ATEP as really an important benefit to their city, and that was a good feeling. The Orange County Business Council's Workforce Development Conference, which was already noted, has two publications. And one of them are the growing importance of community colleges to the economy of Orange County. So, I felt this is a key publication, and anyone could borrow this from me if they'd like. The Saddleback College Car Show was emphasizing the excellence of our automotive tech program and our other CTE programs that were there. And our students, these students that were there, are getting high-paying jobs in the community. And they're learning how to service in the future autonomous cars, all the computer tech things, the very important air conditioning that they can use not only for automotive jobs, but so many other jobs in the community. So, these students are getting jobs in the community, and that's what we want. And our colleges are very active, and the professors and staff are working very hard. And these are some of the other events I attended. The Irvine Valley College Club Day, the Laguna Woods TV interview where I was interviewed, and you could watch this on the Saddleback College YouTube channel. The Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force Meeting, which is held at Rancho Santiago Community College District in Santa Ana. I met with the Saddleback College Foundation staff. I attended the Saddleback College WALL Literary Journal and I always...Literary Journal Presentation. This was the best ever that I've attended. I'd like to attend it every year. Gina Schaefer, who's the faculty advisor, thanked the board for their ongoing support for the WALL and for recognizing the integral role of literature and the arts in our campus. I attended the IVC Women's Self-Defense Workshop at IVC, the Saddleback College Tailgating Barbecue and Homecoming Game, the Breast Cancer Awareness Event at the Chancellor's Office. In the Horticulture Department, two of our professors wrote a new horticulture book emphasizing sustainable flora, and I had an opportunity to review that book. And also, the South Orange County Economic Coalition Meet and Greet. And I think my two minutes are up, so thank you.
Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. For the sake of time, I'd just like to share with you the one important meeting that I had, and it was with conference call, but it had to do with our foundation here at Saddleback College. It was a delight to sit there and listen to the detailed report of the success for our students. I didn't say success of the gala. It's the success of our students. It's the scholarships. That's all I saw, was scholarship, scholarship, scholarship. It was a detailed report what we did right, and we'll just personify that next year. Thank you.
All right. Student Trustee Uriarte.
Good afternoon, everyone. On Friday, October 3rd, I attend the Community College League of California Advisory Committee on Educational Services Meeting in San Francisco. I have the pleasure to voice the students' opinions about food and housing insecurity in South Orange County. I also thank the committee for always taking in consideration student opinions and perspectives. And I encourage a better communication flow to clarify doubts of student associate representatives in different colleges, not in our district fortunately, to reflect a strong and stable organization. On Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 AM to noon, Orange Coast College and Saddleback College organized a networking event in benefit of the Ocean Institute's surrounding grounds, also known as a beach cleanup at Dunapoint. I would like to thank Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College for the multiple events during this month, this incredible month of workshops for transfers to students. Also, that color...I...many students approached me, and they were surprised and glad to receive many internships, part-time and full-time job offers into their emails, thanks to the collaboration of Irvine Valley College, Saddleback Valley College, Saddleback College, and LinkedIn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chancellor Burke.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna let my written report stand for this month.
Okay. College President's Report.
Very briefly, I want to welcome Dr. Biscachill to the chair to my left. I am very pleased to have her as a colleague and look forward to working with her in the future. I also want to acknowledge and give thanks in absentia to Dr. Rockmore for giving me such a warm welcome when I started in this position and for the mentorship that he has provided in that role. Piggybacking on Trustee Wright's comments, not only did we win that game, but we've won another game since. As he pointed out, the Gauchos in football are 7-0. Our ranking in at least one national poll listed us up to number two in the National League in our state, so we're very excited about that. I consider this one of the silver linings to the delay in our stadium that by the time we launch our stadium, we will likely have a number one or number two football team to celebrate opening day with, and that is a great thing indeed. Finally, I just want to give a couple of quick updates on enrollment and budget to keep you abreast of our progress on some of the important work we're doing. Enrollment for fall is looking, now that we have some early positive attendance numbers and second half semester enrollment in, is looking up somewhere between 1% and 2%, which is within or exceeds target. So, we're very excited about that in the face of most California community colleges which are experiencing declining enrollment. And our budget deficit, which we were projecting just a few months ago for this year at 3%, is down somewhere near 0 and 2%. We'll have another report on that toward the end of the calendar year, but that's looking good for fiscal 1920 as well. Thank you all.
Acting President Biscachill.
Just briefly, in line with the written report, there's a couple of things I just wanted to make announcements about. Tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00, there's gonna be a fundraiser for the IVC Food Resource Center. That's gonna be at Angelina's Pizzeria. It's a $25 admission. That will get you food and a non-alcoholic beverage. But if an alcoholic beverage is your thing, you can pay for that as well, as long as you're 21 years of age. And that's at the Los Olivos Marketplace tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00. The second event happens on Wednesday. It's a big event for us. Over 300 veterans we're expecting for the Veterans Leaders Innovation Conference. It's part of a grant that IVC has received. It goes from 9:00 to 3:00 PM, and we're really excited to welcome veterans onto the IVC campus. And lastly, I will be there on Friday to support the Orange County Teacher nominated Teacher of the Year for IVC, Benjamin Meese from Psychology. So, I will see you there on Friday night and with Benjamin Meese and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG IVC.
All right, well, I'm gonna go first. Hello, members of the board and the public. It's an honor to be here. My name is Jake Ribzick, the president of the ASG of Saddleback. Just to report on our numbers, right now, we're floating around 80 members, which is very historic for our student government. We're very active in getting all of our committees activated, which is a very key part. We're very proud to announce that our veteran committee has finally been rebooted after two years of being stagnant. So, we're excited to bring them back and to have veterans have more of a voice in our student government. We've been working with Gina Harris Caldwell on using our ASG members as volunteers for the new clothing and food pantry that we have on campus, along with the free groceries that we offer every first and third Wednesday of the month. This weekend, we just sent a delegation of six up to Sacramento to go to CSOW, which is a leadership conference for community colleges where they learn how to write resolutions, learn leadership skills, and they are able to socialize. So, they're gonna be debriefing with us, the delegation that we sent up tomorrow. So, we're very excited to see what they have to say. And now, moving on to our events, we had a lot of great events in October. I'll just talk about two of them. We had our undocumented student week, where we had students participate in events that we had all around the campus. They were able to participate in an art piece that we had in the quad, where they could write their stories, either as an immigrant or as somebody who supports immigrants, and put it on the art piece. We also had a speaker, Dr. Daniel Solozano, who spoke on a lot of the themes that we had throughout the week. And last week, we just had our Fall Fest, which was Club Rush with a fall theme. So, we had a lot of games. We had a human-sized hamster ball. We had...all of our clubs are out, and they were really active, getting students involved. And now, we're looking forward to November. It's, you know, another month closer to the end of the semester, so we're gearing up for second semester to ensure that we have a smooth year. Thank you.
Now, ASIVC. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Faras Khatib, ASG IVC president. I will keep my update just a little short for today. We are working as a student body to advertise our seven ad hoc committees I brought to you guys before, ranging from sustainability all the way to environmental sustainability and safety on campus. So, that should be exciting. That will be implemented our first week of November. We have also had parliamentary procedure training from our interim director of student life, Dr. Jennifer Fernandez, which has been very beneficial to all of the student body, all 100, I think, 20 people. I...the number's off a little bit, but yeah, something around that. But it was very beneficial. I just want to give an exciting update that we have now been included into the Student Senate of California group where I will be serving as the designee representative in the teleconference meeting at 8:30, just a little bit further after this. So, should be very exciting. And yeah, and it's part of our mission goal to expand ourselves in the state and get all of our goals and initiatives expanded. Yeah, that's all I got for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no board requests for reports, we're gonna move to discussion item 4.1, Legislative and Advocacy Overview. If you guys need to get going, this is your...you're out. Okay.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dale Shimasaki. I'm the CEO of Strategic Education Services, and I have with me David Neben, who works with me on the staff. We're your state legislative advocates for here in California. First, let me say thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you this past year. We look forward to work with you as we proceed in the future. We wanted to give you, first of all, a quick update on the legislative activity that occurred this past year. As you can see from this table, the next two slides will have a listing of bills for which the district took positions on in the Assembly and the Senate. As you can see from this table, this is the list of the assembly bills. You have the bill and the author's name, the description of the legislation, the position that the district took in the outcome. This year, there were 475 bills in the education arena that were reviewed, and we sort of called down to 10 pieces of legislation which you...your district took a position on. Of those 10 pieces of legislation, six of those pieces of legislation, the outcome was consistent with the position that you had taken on the bill. On this table, just by coincidence, the first six bills show...that are listed here show the positions that were taken and that the outcome of the bill was consistent with the position you had taken. On the last bill, AB 1727, the Weber Bill, that measure was vetoed by the governor based on cost considerations. For the Senate, two of the bills that were...that you had taken a position, a support position on, were vetoed. However, I should note that in the case of SB 268, the Weiner Bill, there's no such thing as a dead bill in a legislative session. He is considering reintroducing this piece of legislation next year, and we'll get more information on that as it develops. Secondly, on SB 291, the LAVA bill, which not only your district, but the community college district statewide... to craft the legislation along with AB 31314, such that it, we could get funding for it perhaps next year in the budget. Speaking of the budget, there is one major budget initiative that the, that you had asked us to pursue on behalf of the district, and that was on the Funding of Capital Outlay Projects. There are two projects. One was included in the governor's budget. It was the Gateway Building Project for Saddleback College. We worked to ensure that the, the money stayed in the budget. There was $1.7 million for preliminary plans and working drawings, and it was sustained and kept in the budget. In addition, there were, there were a series of projects that were, that were ready for implementation, but the governor did not include in the budget, and we had sought to seek an augmentation to the budget to increase the funding, to make sure that some of these high priority projects, including yours, get included. So the Irvine Valley College Fine Arts Project was not in the budget, but we had worked with your legislative delegation through a series of meetings and letter-writing campaigns and meetings with committee staff to get this project added to the budget, so successfully a part of the capital outlay program for the community colleges. The next two slides, I'll have David review.
So the Medical reimbursement issue was brought to our attention, that the current Welfare and Institutions Code does not allow for staff with higher credentials than a registered credential nurse, a registered credential school nurse, to be reimbursed for their services for mental health screenings, assessments, and other types of services of that nature. So we sought out an amendment to the California State Plan within the Welfare and Institutions Code. Our activities included meetings with the Department of Healthcare Services Administration, as well as communications back and forth between the district staff and DHCS staff. We're very appreciative of Dean Harris Caldwell's dedicated work on this particular issue in Sacramento, as well as statewide, leading the coalition that she did. So we have gotten a verbal commitment from the Department of Healthcare Services staff that there will be a 2021 State Plan Amendment that will address this issue, and then going forward, the district will be able to seek reimbursement for those services. There were three lobby days and advocacy days that we had some of the district delegation come up for, to advocate for certain positions. The first one, on January 28th, this one happened to coincide with the Community College League of California Legislative Day. Our district's delegation, including several trustees, as well as the chancellor and Director Clark, came up and advocated for Assembly Bill 30, which was the dual enrollment bill by Mr. Holden, and ultimately was signed into law, as well as the two capital outlay projects, the one for IVC and the one for Saddleback College. The February 4th Advocacy Day, this one was primarily focused on the Board of Registered Nursing issue, and ultimately, this bill was, as Dale pointed out earlier, this bill was held in committee, and that was the position of the district, was to ensure that it does not get through. The final advocacy day, the students from the Associated Student Government came up and provided advocacy for Assembly Bill 1314 by Mr. Medina and Senate Bill 291 by Ms. LAVA. These were the two student financial aid bills, and both of them will be brought back up in some form in this upcoming legislative year.
Let me go to the last slide. Let me just say, when we develop these positions and work on these issues, it's a collaborative process with the district, and it's not just a one-way street where we, we come in and we provide you a list of bills and recommendations. It's, it's a very collaborative process, and we hear from, through Director Clark and through the administration, and in fact, some of you, as trustees, we heard, we got feedback on legislation and suggestions on how to improve legislation on amendments or raise concerns. And we wanted to say that we really appreciate that, because it does have a very strong impact on what happens on the outcome of legislation. And your feedback was very valuable for us, particularly in the cases of the AB 48 on the bond bill, on AB 1364, the Rubio bill, on the, the nursing issue, and then AB 1486 on the Ting bill related to surplus land. Had we not been flagged about some of these issues, nothing would have been, would have happened. And let me just put a special footnote on the Ting bill. There were a number of amendments requested of this bill, and the only amendment that got through in the last committee was the amendment that, that you folks had proposed. So we want to thank you for flagging and catching it, because it would have, you know, it would have sailed through and gotten to the governor without, without anyone paying attention to it. I wanted to say that, because as we go into next year, we hope to continue working with you in a collaborative way. We just want to flag a couple of events that you should just be aware of, that'll give you context for next year. One is that there are two competing ballot initiatives going to increase taxes for education. One is the Split Roll Initiative that was sponsored by statewide labor organizations. The ballot initiative had actually qualified, but the sponsors had, have withdrawn the initiative, and they're rewriting it. The reason that they're withdrawing and rewriting it is that it's polling very badly. The second initiative is the CSBA Initiative, California School Board Association's Initiative, to increase, increase funding for K-14 education. They want to increase the income tax for millionaires, and they also want to increase the corporation tax. They had initially sought to try to get this tax increase through the legislature. It appears there aren't the two-thirds votes necessary to place it on the ballot through a legislative vote, so they're seeking an initiative campaign as well. The only drawback is that it costs between $5 million, $5 million and $10 million to successfully wage an initiative campaign, and the resources aren't exactly there yet. And I'm, the second area is on financial aid reform. I just mentioned that earlier on the update, so we should keep, look at on that. And then, continuing efforts and discussion are, discussions are taking place on affordable housing, the impact not just on students, but also on faculty and staff. And as the legislative process moves, there'll be updates on the state of the economy, what revenues look like. We get a monthly report on revenues from Department of Finance and the State Controller, and that'll give us a guidepost on what Proposition 98 will look like and funding for K-14 will look like for the next session. So let me close and say once again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you, and we'll open a question. Do you want discussion, questions and discussion?
Well, I wait for some of them to decide whether they want to ask questions. I just want to say thank you so much for the work on the Ting bill. When I heard about what they were planning and brought it to Director Clark's attention, it was, it was a ghost.
Yes.
And, and we got lucky, so thank you.
Yes. Well, thank you for sharing your concerns with us. It's appreciated.
Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, trustee Brennagas. Welcome, gentlemen. Thanks for coming down here. I had a couple of questions. SB 268, can you remind us again what that would have done? Because I think we had taken a support position, and the governor vetoed it.
So this bill would have adjusted the way that ballot measures show up, or how initiatives, the exact writing shows up on the ballot measure. The governor's veto message was extremely vague, that it would essentially erode transparency. We haven't gotten any more clarification on that yet, so.
So the bill didn't have anything to do with lowering the voter threshold to issue bonds or raise taxes, correct?
No.
Yeah.
There is a, under current law, there's a 75-word limit to describe a ballot issue or tax measures, and while that might make sense for a single-tier tax measure, or like one single rate tax, there are certain taxes and fees, as I understand it, that are multi-tiered, and to be able to describe that in a 75-word limit was very difficult, if not impossible. So the proposal was to allow them to state in the 75-word description, to say, "See voter guide," and that's where the objections came about. On one hand, well, that's too vague. On the other hand, as well, if you go the other way, we, we won't be able to describe fully what the, the tax will look like for revenues, rates, and things like that.
Great. And then on the State Plan Amendment, to get reimbursement for, for Medical Services, something we advocated on. So is that, my understanding now, that's going to go to the federal CMS for approval next year?
So the State Plan Amendment that was pushed through this year did not include it. They, the Department of Healthcare Services essentially erased everything that we had worked on, down to just a few minor adjustments. What we have a verbal commitment from the DHCS staff is that the 2021 State Plan Amendment will include that adjustment to the Welfare and Institutions Code that clarifies any credential can be, any, any level of credential staff
Okay.
will be eligible.
And I assume our Dr. Harris is, is happy with that language, but, but just in terms of process, that goes then to the federal CMS, right?
Yes.
For their review and approval?
Eventually, eventually.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, it looks like we batted 1,000 on, on our advocacy, AB 30, the funding for IVC and Saddleback, and then, well, eventually, the State Plan Amendment.
Yeah.
So, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Milczek.
Yeah, good job also. I want to kind of talk about what trustee Jamal was talking about, in the Medical reimbursement for, for state mental problem, for mental hospitals for our students, mental, sorry, mental services for our students. The amendment that you were successful in really will help to make sure that our personnel that work in, in our health services can actually work with our students to help them if they have mental health problems. So does this only pertain to our district, or does it pertain to all the community college districts?
So it is, it is a statewide issue. Currently, you're, the district does actually provide these services. It's just that because the, the vast majority of the district's staff has a much higher credential, most of them are doctorate or master's level, the, the particular code does not allow for reimbursement of those services through the Medical process. That's what the intended amendment is designed to do, to make sure that those services that the district is providing will be reimbursed by the federal government.
Okay, because of course, you know, we hire psychologists, and we hire some psychiatrists, and certainly master's degrees in social work, so, and, you know, these are important services to offer to our students that are having mental health problems, help, help them get through school. So in, in addition, I thought I'd ask you, do you know how much we're getting for, from this last statewide bond for the Saddleback College Gateway Project? Do you have that, those figures? And also, do you want to touch briefly on the next state bond issue for education?
So the, it's $1.7 million for preliminary plans and working drawings. The next statewide bond is Prop 48. It will be on the March ballot. It's $15 billion for kindergarten through the University of California. Community colleges will be receiving, if the measure passes, $2 billion of the $15 billion. UC will get $2 billion, and the CSU will also get $2 billion. So each higher education segment got $2 billion each.
My understanding is that the $2 billion going to the community colleges is not really allocated for anything. We could use those funds according to how we see it's important for our students. Is, is that correct?
Well, it will go through, because it's a statewide bond, it will go through a statewide process that's governed by the state chancellor's office and the Board of Governors of community colleges. So they will have a, a ranking system, if you will, of how those bond monies will be distributed.
Okay, we'll be working to try, we, we need your help to try to get on there again next time.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a whole other meeting that we should.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We should talk about that, yes.
If I could add on that, to that trustee Milczek, this is Emery, sorry. In this year's budget, we have $1.7 million for Gateway, but ultimately, it will be a $25 million state match.
Yes.
So that'll occur in 2021. And then similarly, for the Fine Arts Complex, we'll be getting about $22 million from that one.
So that'll be helpful, so that'll be really helpful to, for us, our facilities and both college campuses. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the excellent.
Trustee Whitright.
Thank you for the excellent presentation and your quick information. I have one question, well, actually, there are two, that had to do with 1364, the Rubio bill, having to do with nursing and the outrageous request by the for-profit colleges and universities. This is very close to my heart. I understand that you said that it's held in committee. Is that committee called Never Neverland?
We could ask the speaker to rename the committee if you'd like.
No, I would like that. But just to feel, if you were there, what do you see happening in the future that these other universities and colleges are going to come back? Because it's with a vengeance, and I don't even think most of the community knows what would happen to nursing programs in community colleges.
Well, the issue is not going to go away. They will come back with another bill or with another proposal that they will, they will try to vet. It is also the situation that other colleges that we have interacted with are raising more and more concern about it. So I think the coalition that we will have will be growing and will become stronger because of the, because it's happening not just in this area, but it's, it's starting to happen elsewhere.
Right.
So I think this is going to be a bigger and bigger issue, and we just have to keep our eyes peeled.
It's going to be huge.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you just let us know again what that bill would do?
That bill was, would exempt the for-profit colleges from certain requirements to, to be allowed to grow and expand their enrollments. So it would, it would exempt them from going through review process through the Board of Registered Nursing.
Right. And we, we opposed it.
Yes.
And I assume all, most of the, all of our colleagues did, in the league and the state chancellor's office, right?
Right, and it got held. It got held, so.
I heard that they actually tried to sue the BRN. Ridiculous. Okay, it's, I don't want to take up time, but ladies and gentlemen, you ought to understand this bill, because if you're going to the hospital, it's going to, it could make a difference on you, let's put it that way. But they will actually displace Saddleback College nursing students from the hospitals in our area, and they're around. Displace our students, because we don't offer surprises. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Capitol Advocacy.
Before we dive into the presentation, I just wanted to clarify some of the pieces that we heard about on the Medicaid issue. So from a process standpoint, this is an area that we've been working on closely with your state team, as well as your staff. So the first step is, the state has to submit a State Plan Amendment to their LEA Medical Plan. That was the process that the state team was referring to, that they're anticipating having a 2021, early 2021 submission of that State Plan Amendment. Once they submit that State Plan, it goes to federal CMS for approval. So that's sort of from a staging standpoint, how that works and where we are in the process. So we are awaiting the State Plan Amendment to officially be written. So we are awaiting the state plan amendment to officially be written and submitted. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana DeBeaumont with Capital Advocacy Partners. Amanda Fenton is my partner. And most of you have probably met Kristin Lamell as we have members of Congress into the district. She's local. So thank you for this opportunity and for the opportunity to continue working on behalf of the district, the colleges, and your students. So most of you kind of know who we are and, and what we do. We work, we work closely with Congress, agencies, and the administration to understand where things are going and to position the colleges for success. We research programs, we understand the requirements and the agency priorities, and we troubleshoot issues. It's, it's not uncommon to get a call to find out, hey, how can we work this? Or how can we word this? How can we position this? And we're always active and ready to respond. Sometimes that requires us to have conversations with the program directors at agencies or to reach out for technical staff. We build congressional support for the things that we're trying to do. And we really work hard to plan ahead of what we're going to go after and how we position you, how we build the partnerships, and how we fully understand the programs to work with your teams to be successful. If we're going to apply, we want to win. We, we have special focus, of course, on STEM and science with grants like the NSF includes, the advanced technology programs, programs for special population such as ANAPZI or HSI, which is Hispanic-serving institutions, student support services, and federal pilot programs, CTE, and programs in high-demand fields. So we're really working with your team to understand where things are going. We kind of walk in, dive into the reports, and really help to work with you to try to see where we can converge on the same pathway of funding opportunities or legislation and how we can impact your bottom line. We work with legislation and regulations to examine, track, and make recommendations for positions. We draft and recommend legislative languages and position letters. And we really importantly serve, help to establish you as a resource for information and as an expert in, in, in federal decision-making and things that impact you. I think we've really made important progress in having our new members on campus more regularly and really engaging in that expertise, pitching hearings to happen here. And Kristin's really played a big role in working with us to, to, to do that. Okay, focus on the district. As you know, we really limit the work we do for clients that could have conflicting goals or objectives or would compete against each other. So you are the community college district that we work with, and we focus solely on you. One piece that we've heard about several times is the HEA reauthorization. We work with you to reissue a position letter, and we regularly engage committee staff. Advocacy to support student veterans and the things that we're doing. The fact is that our colleges are both leaders in services to student veterans, and we've really worked hard to let people know and establish us as a best practice and someone that they can turn to for expertise and, and learn how to move forward in a, in a smart way. We worked with advocacy for California members on the Medi-Cal issue with CMS, DACA, as well as SALT. We routinely outrage and consult on active grants as well as working with your teams to plan what we're going to apply for and what we're going to target. We engagement and liaison with staff. We're working to try to get a potential field during here with Rep. Porter's staff. Staff for Rep. Levin will visit next week. Congressman Levin will visit next week. And we're looking forward to having some students in DC. We engage, consult, schedule, and attend all meetings. We would like to thank Board President Printegras, Vice President Jamelle, Terrence Sullivan of Saddleback, Jeannie Harris-Cogwell, and Roxanne of, Roxanne Maxival coming to DC and working with us. You know, we only are successful the more you guys are engaged. I mean, we talk to people all the time, and of course, they like us, but we can't replace you. So thank you, and, and your efforts really make a difference.
Wonderful. So a couple of concrete outcomes from some of those visits, which is always great to think about. So first, when President Printegras came out, we met with the Association of Community Colleges. We provided information about how IVC was using their ANAPZI grant and the great benefit that that was having to all types of students. We later heard that the Community College Association, the federal, national one, actually used that story in their advocacy around HEA reauthorization as well as around appropriations for that year. So they loved hearing our stories, seeing those results, and seeing what innovative things IVC was doing with that grant. In addition, when Vice President Jamal came out, we met with the Department of Labor and their apprenticeship program specifically. Through that meeting, we learned about some white-collar apprenticeship programs in Chicago that are a national model. We shared that information with the college presidents. Saddleback College was very excited about that information, and through that resource, as well as their own leadership, did a site visit out to Chicago to actually see that program in action and advise on the planning of a future program here. And I believe that you heard about that visit at your August or September update from the presidents. So those are some ways that those visits and that advocacy can have a concrete action on what's going on here and then what's, how we're contributing to that federal conversation. So looking ahead, there are really kind of, this sort of boils down to four big-picture items. So the first thing, you'll notice the impeachment inquiry on a couple of different, of these categories. I think about that more as a, let's not get distracted by some of the additional activities that are going on in Congress right now. The administration activities will continue. So that means that federal agencies will continue their regulatory review and regulatory writing process. And also, federal agencies will continue their grant process and their grant priority meetings. So we want to, you know, focus on the activities that will be rolling out in 2020 in a concrete way. So that's kind of one big-picture thing. The second, looking forward in grants. We know that the HSI and the ANAPZI program, which are important to Saddleback as well as IVC, will compete in this upcoming fiscal year. So we are already working with the colleges on how we plan those applications, what those priorities are. IVC's ANAPZI program, we were very excited to be one of the few places that received a supplemental grant because it's been performing so well. They actually got an additional plus-up on their grant to do more activities. But they will need to recompete for that in this coming year. We're also looking and watching what the next reiteration of CTE and labor grants are going to look like. The current administration has launched a very large apprenticeship initiative that is mostly through sort of the very first phase of grants and contracts. And we'll be looking to see how that evolves based on congressional dynamics as well as the outcomes of the 2020 election. So grants, remember to focus on what's actually going on, on the ground. The third thing is the HEA reauthorization. So there's going to be continued discussion on the HEA reauthorization. We are not anticipating a whole-scale rewrite. That's just not politically in the cards right now. They may do a mini revision around four areas that there seems to be consensus on. It's a little bit of a long shot, but it's possible. And that would be on FAFSA, Pell, some accountability pieces, and then the Veterans 90-10 rule. Then the final item that I wanted to emphasize on this from a big-picture standpoint is we'll be setting priorities for 2020 pretty soon. So last year in, I should say, this year in April, the board set and voted on a set of federal priorities. We're working with staff to start that process earlier this year. We found that incredibly helpful for our work and the work of the folks that come to DC and do those visits. And we're excited to be engaging in that process aided by a local intern program that we're going to start here for South Orange County students. Thank you so much.
Assume those are the requests to speak from the last segment.
Withdraw and then re, re.
Yeah, I guess.
Repurpose.
So while they figure that out. Again, thank you for hosting me when I was there. It was, it was very informative. We had a lot of, had a lot of meetings, a very short amount of time, but they were all apparently very productive, and I was glad to help. Trustee Jamal.
Yes, thank you both. Good to see you again. Just a couple of things. It looks like, based on your report, that especially in the next year or so, on the presidential election year, impeachment, things going on, that our focus should be on the grants side of things. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Grants and regulatory review.
Okay. So that in terms of your work, you're going to probably increase or prioritize the, the work on grant funding and then not so much on the legislative advocacy side?
Yeah, there's really not a lot of legislation moving right now. I mean, we could say that there are lots of things out there, but the fact is, they aren't moving. So we really try to focus on things that are going to have an outcome. And the grants we know are going to come. We've worked closely with the district and with the colleges to prioritize what can win funding and to help package those. And so, and those are multi-year grants, so we're really focused on some big ones this year.
So let me ask you about SALT. This has been a bad two weeks for me because the Republicans in Congress and, and the president raised my taxes and much of our taxes in this district significantly. And then we just heard that the deficit's $1 trillion. So taxes go up, deficits go up, and we don't have the SALT deduction anymore. So not a good time for states like California?
No.
Is there any chance, or any chance at all for movement on reinstating the SALT?
This year? I actually think.
Let's just say and then.
Yeah, I actually think that, that the SALT is going to come back. I think it is, the, eliminating it was a highly unpopular, and people generally think it, it's, it needs to be reinstated. The question is, how are we going to do it and when? The Senate voted, you know, was it last week, to, to, on a standalone? And I actually thought that might have a chance. But we have several members of the Senate running for the president who didn't vote, and it was on straight party line. So we need, it needs to be part of a broader package to bring it back. And there is talk of a new, you know, tax fix, tax package. I do think we're going to get the SALT deduction back. I'm not sure it's this year.
No, I don't agree with you.
I know, we, we, I can agree to disagree, but, but I think that's coming back. I, I, I think it's coming back. It, it, I don't think it's going to be this year because the calendar just isn't really there. And the focus this year with, with the limited time that's left is going to be on, of course, impeachment and appropriations. I mean, we're operating under a continuing resolution that goes until just before Thanksgiving. And the question is, on the next continuing resolution, will it be all the bills or only a handful of bills? And how long will it be? It could be a year-long continuing resolution this year and next year.
Which is, which is not the worst scenario from a grant standpoint. So if it's a continuing resolution or if it's a full budget, the grant cycles will continue, and they are most likely going to continue at around current levels. It's really just a matter of if they're going to set new priorities legislatively or if they're going to kick that opportunity until after the next cycle.
And just one final thing. One piece of legislation that is expected to get voted on this week is the Armenian Genocide Resolution. And I just want to thank this district for declaring April 24th as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. Issue has come up repeatedly over the years. And if there's one thing we can do as a country is to tell the truth and hoping for a good outcome this week. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow that.
Trustee Lang.
Just a, a quick rejoinder. 2026 is the year you can hope maybe SALT will reappear since that's when the current tax bill measure is supposed to expire. But seriously, I mean, it's had some perverse effects in a lot of different areas. And one obvious one I can think of is with more people claiming standard deduction, I think the effects on charitable contributions and organizations that depend on those have been seriously affected as well. So be interesting to see what happens.
You would know.
We are hearing a lot about that from charitable contributions. And, and it, towards the end of the year, early next year, we're going to see how, how organizations have really declined in their membership and in their giving. And I think that's going to have a solid impact and a voice.
Okay.
2026.
No, I think before, I definitely think before that. We're in 2019 now. It's going to be before seven years.
I hope you're right.
Okay, we'll make your contract contingent on that.
Okay, okay, okay.
We got it on record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to consent calendar items. I'm going to poll 5.2. Do I have any other polls?
5.3.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing no other polls, I will entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. I have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the balance of the consent calendar. I have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So trustee Wright, why don't you go with 5.3?
On 5.3, there's just a very small correction on page four. And that deals with the current, says chemistry associate in arts, and they're revising it to chemistry associate in sciences. And right there at the, at the end, they have, that has a recommended elective, Chem 12B, which is organic chemistry. You have that also saying it's also required up above. So you just need to remove that statement. For the chemistry majors, it's Chem 1A, 1B, 12A, and 12B. They just had, they've, they've added it just as an elective, but it's not an elective.
It's on there twice.
It's on there. Just a small. Yes. Okay. That's all.
And then the units don't add up, or?
Just remove that.
The units don't add up either on the total. Oh, that's the required. Okay. All right, so then I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended or as corrected. Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So next, on 5.2, I'm going to have trustee Wright read a resolution, resolve, after we take a vote, depending on if we pass it or not. So we have the, we have the item is to have Saddleback and IVC be voting centers in the upcoming election. For those of you not aware, they're no longer going to be running, voting out of people's garages, fire stations, schools, churches, and so forth, unless those places have been determined as voting centers. And I received an email from the registrar of voters asking if we would be interested in doing that. And in the interest of democracy, I absolutely said yes. And it sounds like we were successful in putting in an application for that for both schools. So that's awesome. So I have a motion approved from trustee Wright, a second from trustee Lang, and a request to speak from trustee Jamal. Just a affirmation, I guess. I think we're.
Just a affirmation, I guess. I think we're talking about the twenty, November twenty twenty election. Or are we talking about the election in two weeks?
March.
I mean, yeah, the, right.
March twenty twenty.
Yeah, there's a, like, not in our district. There's elections in other districts.
Yeah, no, the, the next.
Twenty twenty.
The, the twenty twenty March, uh, primary elections.
Oh, it'll be for the March primary?
I believe so. But their, their idea was to get it moved by that, that, that quickly.
March? Okay, great.
Cause early voting will start in February.
Right.
And they wanna have them up and running by then. Okay. Thank you for that question. It clarified something. Seeing no more requests to speak, uh, do we do it electronically or roll call? Read the resolution for, I thought you read it after we say yes. Okay. All right, so go ahead.
Item, item five point two recognizes formal resolution submitted by the board of trustees. This evening, the board is adopting a resolution in support of voting centers on the campuses of Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College within the South Orange County Community College District. In the interest of time, I will read the resolution resolved. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the South Orange County Community College District does hereby recommend that the Orange County Board of Trustees, oh, I'm sorry, the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the Orange County Registrar approve voting centers on the campuses of Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College on the Orange County Registrar's approval list of voter centers.
Okay. Now we'll go ahead and call for a vote.
I think you're supposed to call the trustees by name?
Not anymore. Now that we do electronically, we don't have to. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. All right, moving on then to six point one, uh, I'm sorry, we did six, one, two, and three already. On to six four. Irvine Valley College Sub-Award Agreement from University of California Irvine NSF Prime Award. A motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point five, Irvine Valley College Soccer and Practice Fields Project Architectural Services Verade Design, Inc. A motion from trustee Whit Riddell and a motion, uh, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. A unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Item six point six, Saddleback College Programs to be Offered at ATEP Revised from two thousand eleven, twelve. Believe we will get a, no, that's it. All right. So trustee Whit Riddell motion, second from trustee Jay. And a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Thank you. So this is a significant change from the original plans at ATEP. And I was just wondering if Dr. Stern, you might be willing to do a Cliff Notes, Cliff's Notes version of the rationale, uh, for why we've made this change and why the, the direction you've taken is, is right for Saddleback College?
Sure, uh, the Cliff Notes version, if you will. Um, back when the original assessment was done and the plan was laid out, uh, I think there was a shortage of facilities that offered sophisticated SIM training for healthcare providers. That is no longer the case, uh, making that a fairly non-viable, um, option for locating, uh, at, at ATEP. Uh, increasingly, we wanted to look as a college at what would actually bring benefit to the college and increase enrollment and allow us to expand our programs. Visi-ve the location in Tustin, uh, so close to potential industry partners, uh, in fields like, uh, auto, uh, and culinary, uh, slash hospitality. So with that in mind, uh, we, we put forth this revised, suggested, uh, list of programs that we would like to offer at ATEP that we think will benefit the district, benefit the community, and most definitely benefit the college in two thousand twenties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
I, I just thought it was interesting that you added an emeritus center to the plan along with, um, the auto, uh, auto mechanics program and the culinary arts program. And I think it might be a good idea to put one there, so.
Sure. As you know, trustee Milchker, we offer emeritus courses at thirty-four centers a, around the region. Um, we are increasingly facing, um, difficult hurdles to get over to do that because they don't charge us. Uh, and it's becoming difficult to do that. So we wanted to make sure if we're building a facility, that one of the things we might offer there might be emeritus versions of some of the four credit offerings that we're already offering there.
To keep the buildings filled. Thank you. It can help our students. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point seven, Grant Awards, Saddleback College US Department of Education Childcare Access Means Parents in School. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no, oh, trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I, I, I thought this is, this is wonderful. So, so will this grant, um, be helpful in helping? I, I noticed that we're now offering discounts to the childcare program for, um, for students if they have children, um, so they can get their, uh, children in the childcare program and also for staff, for faculty and for staff. So if they have children of, of preschool age or younger, they could have their, uh, kids in the program for, um, for a discount. And also they're, they're offering, um, programs that they will actually offer scholarships to these students as well. So is that what this, this grant is for?
That is correct. And in part, it will expand the number of folks who are eligible for subsidies, um, to avail themselves of our service. I must add, uh, one of the other parts of the grant that's extremely helpful to us. It will allow us to qualify for yet another certification for our childcare center at an even higher level than we do now, which opens up the possibility of additional grants.
Excellent, excellent. It's a very good center. I know that, you know.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point eight, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project Change Order Number Six. A motion from trustee Wright and a second from. All right, I'll second it. Okay, I've seconded it. I have a, uh, request to speak from trustee Jay.
Uh, it says a revised contractual completion date, October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen for the stadium?
Yes.
It's already passed.
It's not an error.
It's not an error. Okay.
Correct. So as we all know, we are very much delayed on this project. What we have agreed to as far as timeline puts us to October twenty-second, twenty nineteen. So we will see, um, more change orders coming forward as, as the project continues.
Yeah, do you have any guesstimate of what might be done?
So right now, the latest, um, schedule that they have submitted is putting it in the January, or I'm sorry, June timeframe. But we don't have it, June of twenty twenty.
Okay. I thought it was a misprint.
No, it's not a misprint, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, trustee Wright.
I had the same comment because I, I see, you know, it, back in, I think it's seven, seven point four or, yes, or seven point three, it says June. I think it's gotta be June because of football. I mean, football starts September.
Yes, football starts in September, but I, you know, it's impacting more than just football. It's also impacting track and field and, and everything. So it is a substantial inconvenience is probably too light of a word, but it is a substantial inconvenience for the college. And it's a constant frustration, I would say, for myself, the college, and everyone involved. Um, but we are moving along. They are making progress, albeit slow. Um, and so they have continued to change out personnel on the job that we are hopeful will, um, create better synergy for the job and that it continues to move forward.
Is there, is there any way that we can dock them, dock them if they don't perform?
Yes. So I think the importance of that date is if they don't meet that date, which they haven't, then liquidated damages can occur for every day past that until completion. So we are tracking that.
Trustee Jamal.
Sam Marie, uh, couldn't, I'm just wondering, some of these changes that are occurring, I'm wondering if some of them could have been prevented in the first place through better language in the original contract. And that's one, is that true? And then secondly, what is our process when we enter into a contract and scope of work on a, on a project like this? Who's involved? Who reviews it? Who, um, looks at the language and then, uh, uh, obviously ultimately comes to us? But I'm just wondering, the first part, could, some of these change orders have been prevented if we had better language, correct language there in the first place?
So I would say the garland roof system, had it been known at the time that we wanted that as the district standard, could have been prevented if we had gone to the district and requested a sole sourcing for garland roofing. Because what we did was we put in or equivalent. So it was requested, but we put in or equivalent. So if the district had established that standard, or actually the board had established that standard previously, then we could have been very specific in the criteria documents that it had to be garland roofing. Um, it was not specific. So that's a piece of it. The other items that are on here for tonight, some of it was really due to a change or over in employees in looking at it and how they wanted things to work and move through. So for instance, changing out and having two officials' room rather than one official's room. Um, you know, we say that that's a college request. I think it was a college request in light of all of the issues coming up with Title Nine. So what we wanted was to create a woman's officials' room and a men's officials' room. When you originally started designing the stadium, that wasn't as prevalent of an issue or concern to have the two different ones because you weren't seeing as many female officials that were needed in that area. Um, you know, the, the other ones, it's really preference and to make things more seamless on that. But to ask, answer the bigger question of who's involved. So right now, we are going through the design for the gateway building and the fine arts complex as two examples. There are many people involved. And so we bring in the end users of the building are designed in the conceptual plans. Um, we have college administration that's involved in the conceptual plans as well as district office personnel. So there's many, many people putting in what their programmatic needs are, the adjacencies, um, you know, even to the heights of ceiling sometimes, and really the specifics that are going into it. So it's a pretty robust, um, I would say, collective input that is put into it. And then I think the, we have a responsibility when, when the plans are developed to look at them again and oversee those and make sure that the architect didn't leave anything out in the plans and that there isn't anything in there that we thought was going to be there that wasn't. And so we'll be doing, um, what we call constructibility reviews on plans so that we have a third party reviewing the plans to make sure that they're looking at them to see that it can be constructed in the way that it's been designed that will help, uh, alleviate some change orders in the future. At least that's the hope of why you do a constructibility review.
So do you feel, uh, now we have the right process in place?
I think so. Yes.
Okay.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, is anybody reviewing the, I think part of his question was the language?
Well, that's what I was asking.
Is, is anyone looking for potential loopholes that, that we could avoid these, these kinds of things?
Well, this is all really related to design and changes that we want on how it's constructed. So it's not contractual language. I think our contractual language is pretty strong. Um, it's still a fight. You know, you can always find two attorneys. I, I don't know if ours is still in the room, but I know Elliot's an attorney. You can always find two attorneys that are going to read the exact same thing and interpret it differently.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm looking, sorry to come back on this, but I'm looking more on, I, I, I understand you can disagree over some legal terms. I'm talking about the scope of work.
Right.
What we want from the project, um, designs, um, finishing, whatever it is that, that we have the right people looking at this. So when we come to the, to the end here, um, using, you, you, you mentioned garland roof. Well, if we wanted a garland roof, then we should have said that. That we wanted a garland roof.
Correct.
Okay. So that's why I go back to the process question. You're satisfied we have a process in place that will catch issues like that in the future?
Hopefully it will. You know, I think we're getting more sophisticated in our, um, construction and facilities processes and procedures. The other thing that we are trying to do is to create what we call design standards that will help with a lot of that. You know, where we're gonna, if we can, we went out for an RFP, and so we're, we're evaluating those RFPs that we receive. But the intent of that is to say, what type of roofing do you want? What type of door handles do you want? What type of toilets do you want? And have all of that in there as part of our design standards and then hold the architects and the contractors to those design standards. Um, so that is something that we are working on and are hoping to develop to make things a little bit easier and less susceptible to interpretation or mistake in the future.
Right. So the idea is to have those design standards set before we go to bid and not be changing them as we're constructing the building. So if we can agree to all of that from the beginning, then we'll know what we're bidding.
Sounds good. Trustee Whit Riddell.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor, because that's what I really was looking at, especially with the two, the storage room being divided into two officials' room with the bathroom and all that. Um, at first I thought it was pretty expensive, but if you do two bathrooms for a hundred and seventy-two thousand, I don't know, maybe it's still too expensive, but.
Just argue to get yourself.
I know, I just did that.
Well, it's plumbing and it's mechanical and it's, you know.
Well, it's change. Um, right here, I had put on my notes when I read this, you know, um, it, was it the architect's fault? As you just said, it was, um, an idea that we were gonna change. We didn't think about that ahead of time. So it's appreciated. All right, um, the list that you have, I think is very, very important. And did we have a list when we did the science building? Because I thought that went pretty smooth. Did it not? Uh, that's my confusion. I came onto the seat during the construction of the science building and I never heard of any of, you know, so many complaints as we do with the stadium. So.
One of the things we did at the science building is that we, we hired a good person who knew how to design labs. And he put, he, he put together that design for the labs. And so it's exactly what we wanted.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault here in the district, whatever. We've learned from it and I always say, look for the good. Well, whatever else we build or redesign is gonna be good.
The stadium will be beautiful when it's done. And you guys will all forget about this once it's open and we're using it. I'll remember. You guys will all forget.
Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point nine, Grant Award Saddleback College RFA Number one nine two oh seven. A motion by trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Jay, and a request to speak from trustee Milchker.
Simple request. What is a deputy sector navigator?
Uh, that is the person who serves as a liaison between the program and.
Uh, that is the person who serves as a liaison between the program and industry partners and other programs in the region with which we might articulate.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. You have unanimous trustee, yes vote and a student advisory, yes vote. Six point one zero, study abroad program to Dublin, Ireland, from June twenty-seventh to July eighteenth, twenty twenty. She's already been on this trip, right? You've already been on this one, right? No, you haven't been on it? Oh, well, now you get to go. Okay. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Yeah, I wanna go.
Yeah.
All right, so seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee, yes vote and a student advisory, yes vote. Six point one one, approval of master agreements between South Orange County Community College District and the Foundation for Saddleback. Have a.
The district's foundation.
Okay, uh, it's foundation for the district and Saddleback College. Correct. Mover, motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Jamal, request to speak by trustee Milchek.
Another quick question, um, how does this um arrangements change from our, our, our relationship between the district and the Saddleback College Foundation? Thank you.
You mean, how do the, how does the district function? How does the district foundation function and the Saddleback College function, foundation function or?
Oh, no, no, this is, this is the, the master agreement between the South Orange County Community College District and the Saddleback College Foundation. So I wondered, how, how does this um agreement change our, our current um relationship between our district and the Saddleback College Foundation?
Are there, well, the, these agreements are the agreements, is what allows the foundations to function on behalf of the college or the district. So a master agreement must exist. You must give them the authority to raise funds for the district in the one case and Saddleback College in the other. And you'll have to do these about every five years because the longest we can do an agreement is for five years. So are there any substantial changes that you know of, Anne Marie, in these? Or is this the standard agreement?
It's a standard agreement. I mean, there were substantial changes because there were changes to education code, the, some of the Title V regulations as well as the auxiliary manual that was created by the chancellor's office. So previously, there wasn't an auxiliary manual from the chancellor's office. They created it and updated it um back in twenty seventeen. And so we have been working with the um foundations to get their agreement on the language, just incorporating the language in there. But in essence, they get to keep functioning as they're functioning. Nothing is really changing. We're just um bringing the agreement forward and making it more current in accordance with current um regulations and current codes.
Thank you.
So you could think of it as getting married and every five years, you renew your vows.
That's not a bad idea.
It's my understanding that we let it lapse and it was caught by the audit committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what, what about the um agreement between the South Orange County Community College District and Irvine Valley College? Do we have to uh actually approve that agreement at a different board meeting then?
Theirs is coming next month.
Yes.
I believe theirs is coming next month.
Yes, we're, we're hoping that that one will come forward.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
I didn't know the district had a foundation.
It does, uh, it's, it's small.
They're on the board.
It, it's very small and we use the resources for very limited purposes, uh, so as not to compete with the college foundations that are raising funds for scholarships, which are of course far more important.
Okay, then I understand that there will be a new guidelines for the foundation from the Community College Board of Governors coming up in January. Can we just table this and wait for the new guidelines from the Community College Board of Governors?
I would advise against that because you're already operating without this agreement being in place. So I would, I would suggest that we look at those guidelines and that we approve this tonight and then if we need to make amendments, we can.
Yeah, like, in January, when the new uh um foundation guidelines come up, we will be able to review it then?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, trustee Jamal.
So going back to trustee Milchek's question, I'm looking at, or I looked at before, I have notes on Article Four, and this is relating to the foundation reimbursing the district for costs. So is it, is my understanding that fifty percent of the salaries and benefits of the foundation have to be reimbursed to the district? And then related to that, um, what qualifies or constitutes reimbursement could be um non-monetary activities, for example, um, or monetary activities, but, but not related to salary and benefits like scholarships awarded? Now, could that count as, uh, against, um, as a non-monetary activity that could count towards reimbursement to the district? So what defines non-monetary?
If you look in appendix C, um, so if we go, I think which one? Twenty-six of twenty-seven, we've kind of laid out the calculation. So you have any salaries and benefits, um, any cash payments that are for salaries and benefits, any payments that the foundation makes to or on behalf of departments or co-curricular programs would be considered monetary and then other services provided by, or to the college or district. So those other services are, are really, if the foundation employees are working on district events, then you can kind of calculate that. So those are really, um, those are the monetary. And then you can see the non-monetary below are the various things that would be calculated from the non-monetary.
So the fifty percent can be non-monetary and monetary equalling fifty percent? Or fifty percent has to be monetary and then? I'm just trying to understand that.
Fifty percent needs to be monetary.
And then another fifty, another fifty percent is non-monetary?
Yes, could be in kind.
Okay, so. All right, is that, isn't that, isn't that?
Scholarship is one of the non-monetarys.
Right, so, so, so we pay salaries of, they pay sal, if there's salaries of um five hundred thousand dollars, salaries of fringe benefits, then the Saddleback College Foundation has to reimburse our district two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. If they don't, if there's that, yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yes, yes, in essence.
And then, so how do you calculate for the non-monetary, fifty percent of what? So when we say fifty? Right, no, so I, I mentioned that earlier, so. But when we say that fifty percent of reimbursement has, is, has to be non-monetary, fifty percent of what? Of what number?
Fifty percent of the salaries and benefits of the employees that are working for the foundation that the district pays. So if the district or college is paying for the salaries and benefits, then the foundation is supposed to be matching fifty percent of that.
So cash match and a non-cash match.
Correct.
Now, that's a change from our current practice, isn't it?
No, that's the, that language was in there previously.
But it wasn't being applied. Right, I guess that's what I'm getting towards. We haven't been.
It wasn't monitored, I would say, to the amount that it should have been monitored. And Saddleback's foundation was in, uh, pretty close to meeting that every year. I think it was IVC's that was a little bit different. But I think now with the way that we've worked it out, we're not gonna have to change anything that we're doing. We will still be able to, to treat it as it is because we're, we're taking into account some of the other things as non-monetary to make sure that as we do this schedule of commensurate return every year, we will meet that fifty percent requirement.
Right. Because the foundations were doing these activities to begin with. So it was just a question of how we were looking at them.
And the, Bobby, the foundation is supportive of this?
I don't think so.
Oh.
So IVC's foundation, the reason they haven't brought forward is they still have some questions over the insurance clause and the indemnification. Everything else that they have agreed to.
Yes.
So that's what kind of the holdup is. And then they haven't been meeting regularly and they've had some absences on who was working on it and it's just been.
So the foundations were involved in, in coming up with these.
So the Saddleback College Foundation, their president and their board of governors have reviewed and approved this or done whatever approval they needed, I know, to, to.
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Witt, right now?
For the sake of time, I'm not gonna repeat much of what um trustee Jay said. I, I have a concern, I mean, I read this, this weekend and I'm going, whoa. I would like to table this till the next board meeting so I can get more clarification on this. And I really think we should think twice. January is what, two months away. I don't know why we're rushing this. It's already been umpteen years. I really think we need to see what the board of governors have to say, if that changes verbiage here. I don't wanna do this twice.
So can we table this?
My understanding is we're out of compliance and so we're trying to get into compliance. Is that?
I don't think that's true. I think it, whatever the agreement, the op, the current agreement is, is, is in, in effect until we make uh or enter into a new agreement.
In lieu of no one from the foundation here, maybe we can hear from our internal auditor if he has any input on that?
Yeah, so I've been definitely working with the foundations for the last, back, basically since I started here about two years ago, working on this and, and various iterations of it. Um, I think that, as Anne Marie mentioned, that we have a lot, there have been a lot of changes since these initially were entered into fourteen years ago for Title V. One of the ones that trustee Jamal just brought up was the fifty percent reimbursement. So that, that one would definitely, it required a lot of clarification. And actually, that schedule of commensurate return is one that IVC Foundation has used for us and that's where we took the template from to develop that for all of the foundations. So um in terms of getting us in compliance, I think this definitely would help. And this actually man, it will match what we have recently approved for the board policy on auxiliary organizations. That was recently approved in June, as well as the administrative regulation to go along with that. So we started with the board policy and now we're trying to put the master agreements in line with those board policies that you all have approved.
But I guess the core question is, is there a harm in delaying till the new regulations come out?
I don't think so.
Does it, does it prevent the foundations to continue to operate?
No, it won't stop them from operating at this point, no.
Well, we don't, if I may, the board of governors, it may or may not go in January. We don't know that it's going in January. So, you know, my recommendation would be to move forward as it is and then if it changes, we can always do an amendment to change that article.
Or perhaps, sorry, if I can interject, or in deference to my trustee colleague, we could do um some kind of motion that would say that um if, if the board of governors doesn't act by a certain date, then its agreement kicks in or something like that.
I, I don't know, I actually would maybe recommend that we wait on this until we have IVC's on the same ballot or on the same docket. And then that way, we know they're both in line at the same time for renewal.
So we've been trying to do that. I think Saddleback and the districts were both ready back in June and we didn't bring them forward because we were assured from the IVC Foundation that theirs would be forthcoming shortly. And it's still, they keep kicking it down the line and we don't have agreement yet. So when we got the draft of the audit reports that the audit committee just went over today, there was a finding in the audit reports that we need to have these master agreements. So at that point, the determination was made, well, let's get the districts and saddlebacks to move forward tonight. Since those are ready, they've been agreed to by the foundations, let's move them forward and then we'll just wait on IVC. And once IVC can get their foundation board to approve it, we will bring that one forward.
So trustee Lang and trustee Wright, you were there, did you get the sense, as I did, that we kind of need to move on this?
Yes, yeah, I do think so, but I have some other comments.
Okay. Okay, um, well then, you're next.
So um, I, I guess the way that I look at this is, this really provides the district or the board an option if they're in violation of this agreement or they're not able to provide the kind of benefits to the, uh, to the district that they have essentially promised to, that we, they could be shut down. But I don't honestly see that happening from a practical standpoint. Um, I suspect that what would happen is, is we'd look at, you know, this formula and it's kind of squishy anyways, in my view. And we'd probably determine either that they are in compliance or if they weren't in compliance, that, okay, we're gonna monitor this situation further and try and bring them in compliance. So, you know, quite, quite truthfully, um, I, I don't see that this is going to operate much differently than the way it does right now, uh, except for the fact that we'd be in compliance because now we've got these master agreements in place that say we, yes, we are trying to hold the foundations to some form of accountability here. So my take on it is, is that it's probably not gonna get much better or different than it is now and it's probably not going to realistically affect the way the foundations are operating, um, except for the fact that, um, you know, there is a sense that we do wanna hold their feet to the fire to say, look, you're in the business of raising friends for the colleges, you're in the business of raising funds for scholarships for the colleges. And I don't see that frankly, uh, being any different going forward than it is right now. So that's my two cents worth.
Sorry, I have.
Okay, go ahead.
President Stern, I, I'm just curious, there's some reason why the, no one's here from the Saddleback College Foundation?
That's my bad, I didn't anticipate that there would be questions about it. Um, if I can clarify, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I think I would ask Liz to answer. We are fully in compliance with this master agreement. The foundation currently pays for three of its employees, the college pays for two of the employees. We meet the fifty percent rule in every possible way.
So the Saddleback College at this time and their board of governors is totally, is supportive of this new auxiliary agreement between them and the district?
That is correct. We stand ready to continue to comply with the master agreement that we already comply with informally.
So there's no.
So I don't, I don't, I don't think we should table it, but you can offer the motion.
I wanted to table it because of what's going on in Sacramento. I felt it was too, with board of governors, that it was two months away and what I looked up, that the language can change, especially in reimbursements. And I like the idea, who said that to, I think it was um president, he said that, what did you say, that we were going to?
I thought.
Do both of them together?
Now changed my mind, knowing the, that the likelihood of it coming back in December may be lower than I thought, uh, or November. So, yeah, I, I don't see any harm in voting on this tonight. So, yeah, I I don't see any harm in voting on this tonight.
Puts pressure on IVC.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, I think if anything, it puts pressure on IVC. Okay.
Oh, there's some people coming forward.
Here they are. There's, there's the foundation.
Oh, here we go.
The IVC Foundation.
I'm Lisa Greenberg, and I'm the president of the foundation at IVC.
Oh, welcome.
And we are concerned with the language, and I am working with Sacramento to amend the language, because we are concerned with being able to meet that 50% monetary. So if we have to do that as a foundation, that will shut our foundation down. So it's a very serious matter for us, and I'm very concerned about it.
Okay, I think I've changed my mind again, twice on the same vote.
But is the, I guess the key is the language, it's a compliance with the standards, correct? So what you're saying is you're trying to get the standard changed?
Correct. And the issue is, I'm under the understanding that we have a master agreement right now, that it's not like we're operating without a master agreement. It's just not the new one that's going forward, is that correct?
We were told by the Audit Committee that the master agreement, it's only good for five years, and it expired four years ago? Maybe longer?
There's got to be a language in there that says it continues.
So the the issue at hand tonight is Saddleback College and the District Foundation, not IVC's. We obviously don't have IVC's master agreement, so I don't know that that is really an issue for tonight. It shouldn't change what we're voting on tonight related to Saddleback and the District's foundation.
So, but that's helpful, though, that if if they're working to get that changed, then if, what I said before is we could wait for theirs to get them on the same timeline, we could be waiting until the legislature acts on what they're asking, which would be too long. So we're okay with acting on this one, and then we're also okay with waiting until see what happens. Got it? Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Still waiting for a vote. We have five trustee yes vote, two trustee no's, and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have 6.12, Districtwide ADA Accessibility Project, Architectural Services. A motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.13, Adopt Resolution 19, 19 point, or 19-29, Authorizing Stratasys Inc. As the Single Source Standard for Procurement, 3D Technology, 3D Printer Technology. Have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jay, and a request to speak from trustee Milchek.
Yeah, I just wondered, how does it help us to have a single source standard for procurement for our 3D printer technology? Does this help our district, rather than be able to bid it out to whoever is the little price bidder?
It helps us to ensure that we get the software and the equipment that we need that is going to fit within our curricular program, curricular program.
Because this, this one, so Stratasys Incorporated is is the company that would produce the 3D printing technology that that our 3D program uses, is that it?
Yeah, that teaches, yes.
But how does it help us to just say they're the only company that we're going to be procuring this this technology from?
You'd like to address that.
We'll let Dean Tang address that.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening. Stratasys Corporation owns the patents for their ma, for their own 3D printers. So they're the only place to really buy that printer. They do have a dealer network, but they control that dealer network anyways. And in this particular acquisition that we're looking at, they, they're going to make us one of only three community colleges in California that have this technology for training.
Okay, so the, does this help us in the pricing of this technology, though?
A lot. They're, they're giving, they're giving us over a 48% discount.
48%, that's good, okay, I'll take that. Okay. Okay, well, you know, if it, if it saves us money, then that's a good reason to do it, for sure.
Yes.
Okay, plus having the only one of three community colleges in the state that that teaches 3D printing, is that it?
No, this particular technology in this 3D printer, it's not a little desktop, it's an industrial-sized 3D printer.
Print cars and everything, is that what they?
Uh, no, that was a different deal we were working on.
Okay.
This particular one, it it actually will work with multiple materials, and it can prototype pretty much major manufacturing items.
That really changes how business is done in the state and the nation, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.14, policy, board policy revisions. These are for review and study. A motion from trustee Whit Riddell, and a second from trustee Wright, and a request to speak from trustee Milchek.
I I just have a few questions. In in the first paragraph of, let me find this, where it's on my computer here. Anyway, in the first paragraph, I wonder why they took the Board of Trustees out of that, you know? 6.14, I'm looking for this.
Which policy?
So it was. Yeah, basic aid allocation process. It it says that the board, the one they 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 line through, it says the board will determine the timing of allocation approval and how much of the annual collection will be allocated each year. So obviously, does this mean the board's being taken out of the basic aid process for determining the allocation of basic aid funds?
No. Yeah. So I, that's a.
Sorry, it's actually a good question, I'm on the board policy subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
This came up, but I think the additional language in there clarifies, Marcia, that we are the ultimate authority on the allocation of basic aid funding.
Well, on the bottom, it says, it's a little different, it really is. It's on the bottom, it says annually, the Board of Trustees shall approve the basic aid allocations.
Right, that was the language we discussed, and I think it was Kathleen or Anne Marie suggested that language, but.
Because at the top, it says it will determine, that means the Board of Trustees is going to determine how the basic aid is funding, so that we have a actual role in determining how we spend basic aid funds. And at the bottom, it says we'll approve of basic aid allocation, so that's a real, it's a subtle difference, that we're not really.
I think we were, we were convinced that that language would do what you wanted, but maybe it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Well, if it doesn't, then we should think about changing it.
Yeah, maybe we should look into that a little. Yeah.
That is true, it's review and study, so if you have any recommendations.
Look into that to make sure it doesn't change the Board of Trustees' roles. It actually, you know, we're just like approving everything that somebody else determines, we're just approving it. And the other one, we're helping to determine how the basic aid funds, along with the DRAC and all the other committees that that do it as well. Okay.
Your mic.
The Board of Trustees shall annually determine and approve the basic aid allocation.
It sounds better, it sounds better.
Well, what if you, I mean, I think what I was thinking, I might review and approve. I mean, there's some process to review, or you can say determine. You're, you're right, I mean, we we talked about this at length, and I was concerned about it, and I think trustee Jay and trustee Whit, who are on the subcommittee, were also concerned about it. So i- if this language doesn't do what we thought it did, then we should change it.
So it's review and study, you can submit suggestions.
I'll submit some ideas, too, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead, oh, do you have more?
There's, there's another one under the harassment policy. Let's see where it is here. It talks about unpaid interns. I'm I'm wondering if that shouldn't be changed to just interns. Do we have any interns that are not unpaid interns? Because it's, it says it five times in there. It says unlawful harassment by unpaid interns and volunteers.
Well, if they're paid, they'd be an employee.
Correct. Oh, so do, but do we have paid interns, or?
No.
Oh, we don't have any paid interns, okay, 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 then, then that can be left in. I just thought that shouldn't be left in. Okay, and then number, another one of these, which is. I'm just trying to see if this is the next one. Oh, this is, this is on page two out of two, under the harassment and discrimination prevention complaints. I'm just a little worried about this. And I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I'm willing to be corrected on this one. It says there in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, it says, "No district's funds shall ever be used for membership for any participa, participation involving financial payment or contribution on behalf of the district or the individual employee or associated with it to any private organization whose membership practices are discriminatory on the basis of national origin," and lists about a lot of different things. So I'm just wondering, is that going to be harmful for us with an organization like Annapese, which is really helping students of Asian and and Pacific Islanders? This says if they're discriminatory in any way, we can't, to my understanding, we can't give any financial payment or contribution to these students. Someone correct me if I'm wrong on this, okay?
You're, are you implying that Annapese would be discriminatory?
Discriminatory, right. Well, only discriminatory in that they're, they're, what they're doing is their their charter and their raison d'etre is to help students that are Pacific Islanders and Asian students. So they do, in some sense, only help those students that are in that particular.
But they're not discriminating against anybody else.
By having that be their primary focus.
They're not doing it on the, to the detriment of any other group, they're just doing it to advance their group.
Okay, I I just want to look at this again, though, and to make sure, and to make sure that it's not, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot with something like this, with a a regulation like this, so, okay.
Okay, trustee Lang?
Yes, two, one thing I just noticed, and that is on the, on that page two, unlawful harassment at the top, harassment spelled incorrectly. So we want to fix that. But I think the other thing is, is that trustee Milchek makes a good point, and that is that I know, for example, that UCI has now, will not reimburse their employees, for example, if they attend a conference in certain states that have discriminatory practices. And it seems to me that this could affect, you know, possible things like that that occur in our district. Now, that may be exactly what we want.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We have to think it through, make sure that's what we want.
But good point, trustee Milchek.
Okay, thank you.
We have that same policy, but we allow exceptions to that policy if it's, if the the need of the faculty or the students outweighs the the suggested prohibition against traveling to those states. So like, just today, I approved the Honor Society at IVC to travel to Dallas, Texas for the annual conference related to the Honor Society, because if they don't attend, then we can't have an Honor Society on campus. And so that's something, you know, an exception that is made. So the chancellor's office did recommend that we follow and not allow any travel to those states that have discriminatory practices. But within our board policy that we passed just last fall, we also gave us the ability to make exceptions to that policy.
But in many instances, we're not, probably not going to be aware of whether we're even making an exception or not, in, I would guess, in some cases. And so we could be inadvertently in violation of our own policy.
No, all the exceptions, because it's, we actually programmed that into Workday for all of our travel, and so all of those exceptions have to come through my office for approval before the requisition will be approved.
So there are exceptions, you know, so, okay. If if you feel it's important enough for the students to be able to participate in a certain program.
Okay, so motion and a second for review and study, go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee no vote.
Yes, I would like to say something. As a student myself, it's kind of confusing about the requesting of funding for going out of state. So when the policy clearly says that no district fund shall ever be used, I mean, to my understanding, there's no exception. So where can I find that information as a student, that there is an exception to the rule?
That's a different board policy than this one. This is, that's a different board policy. The one they were referring to with the exception was travel. This is a nondiscrimination policy for organizations. So according to this, and to trustee Milchek's point, there is no exception. That if a group is discrimination, discriminatory, there's no exception, according to the way this is written. We have that exception when it comes to travel for students.
And and I want to make the point that I absolutely do not want any of our groups to be discriminatory. I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, I just want to make sure that we're not giving ourselves some problems for some of the groups that we already have, so that's what I'm saying.
Right, but if they are discriminatory, they either need to fix it, or they don't get money.
Well, yeah.
So it's a good thing. Anyway, all right. Moving on to 6.15.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Now the second from trustee Lang.
I will say up to 9:30.
Friendly amendment.
They're working on it.
Oh, that's okay. I want to, I want to add to that language, not including potential time in closed session after the meeting.
It's an extension to the regular board meeting. Actually, technically, we'd have to extend it beyond that.
Why?
If we don't have a adjournment until after the closed. You don't officially adjourn until after the closed session.
We recessed, we have to come back out. But we didn't have a need to report, but we wouldn't be adjourned until we come back in. We may have something to report, no?
So we have to extend the meeting, yeah.
Hey, guys.
So I'm, I, yeah, but I'm going to amend my, sorry, 10:30.
Because we're going to be recessing back to closed session.
Yeah, we're going back inside.
Well, do you want to accept my amendment?
Well, that, I thought that's what we were doing, up to 10:30.
10:30.
I was going to say not in, including whatever time.
Yeah, but we have to vote, we have to vote to what we think the potential end time is. If we go into closed session and it looks like we're going to go past 9:30, we'll have to come back out, extend it, and then go back.
Whoa.
Okay, all right.
Just to be procedurally correct. All right, so trustee Lang, go ahead and hit the motion, or hit the motion.
They're hitting the exits.
Can you clear the motions and the seconds?
It's there, it's good.
I know, but it was originally you and trustee Lang.
It's okay.
All right, we'll leave it as is, all right. All right, we'll leave it as is, all right. Vote on it as is.
Can you vote?
It won't come up, it's not up yet.
Then you can't vote. She's working on it. And before you vote, student trustee, you would not have to stay here until 10:30.
You moved it back to, you moved it back to 9:30 again.
Yeah, the motion's incorrect.
Oh.
It was 10:30, now it's 9:30. Because we're going back to closed session after this.
There we go. No, still not up for voting. Yeah, we don't care who moved the second. There, no, it still says 9:30.
Now the motion is moving.
And we have to do, we have to do electronic, we can't do a voice vote. What is failing? I know he's still in there.
Sick trance of Gloria.
There we go. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote, thank you. Okay. Now, I've lost my screen, dang it. Now we're on 6.15, Approval of Board Policy Revisions. We have a motion from trustee Wright, a second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. We have a unanimously trust, unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.16, Academic Employee Classified Administrator Personnel Actions, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. We have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.17, Tenure Track Hiring Authorization. Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Well, I don't know.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.18, Faculty Conversion to Canvas One, or to Canvas One-Time Stipends.
Let's hope there's only one.
I have a motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Milchker, a request to speak from trustee Lang.
Yes, just trying to figure out what we're, why we're voting on this item, what, other than for me to vote no. Is there, is there another reason for this to be in front of us?
He keeps coming back, you're right.
There are two, two.
Where are the two?
Look at the second page.
Oh, I missed the second page, okay.
All right, thank you.
But you don't, wouldn't that have been a good enough reason?
If he had known, okay. With that, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Six trustee yes vote, one trustee no, student advisory yes vote. 6.19, Classified Personnel Actions, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. A motion from trustee Witt-Riddell, and a second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.20, Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes. Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Onto report, 7.1, Staff Responses to Public Comments, there weren't any last time. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. 7.3, Facilities Plan Status Report.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I had a conversation with the chancellor today, and my understanding is they're going to, there's going to be a future presentation on the district's sustainability plan sometime next year. Correct? Okay.
7.4, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.5, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. 7.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report. Okay, moving on to reports from administration and governance groups, Saddleback College Academic Senate.
As much as I enjoyed the time extension, no report.
Faculty Association, he ducked out. We'll come back to him if he comes back in time. Otherwise, he'll have to stay until we get back from closed session. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
On behalf of the Senate, we just want to welcome Acting President Biscachill, and we look forward to working with you.
Okay. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services?
Don't report.
Vice Chancellor Human Resources, stand in.
Stand in, has no report.
Okay. Vice Chancellor Business Services?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the board for approving the ground lease with ACS tonight. This is our first ground lease over at ATEP, and I look forward to being able to put this revenue into our 2021 budget, so thank you.
Great. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate?
Yes, I'd like to bring an update on what we've done this month. We have had our caring campus first kickoff on October 18th. We had nearly 30 classified involved in that caring campus workshop. Our second workshop will be November 1st, this Friday. Franklin Covey leading at the Speed of Trust, we have had about 45 classified involved in that, which was last Friday, where we had Franklin Covey coach with us all day. We also have, are going to be following up on spring, in spring 2020, all of the modules for that, that training that we had on Friday. We are looking forward to working with our interim president, Dr. Biscachill, and just to note that we will miss President Rockmore, and he has provided a lot of support and guidance to the classified staff here at Irvine Valley College.
Okay, thank you. Saddleback Classified Senate?
Good evening, trustees and chancellor Burke. I have no report tonight for Classified Senate, but I do want to just give a little praise to the auto shop, the auto show that was put on this last Friday. I attended and actually showed a car as well, and it was extremely informative, all of the programs that they were running, as well as seeing all of the, the new technology in the actual auto shop that they are using now. It's a really amazing program, and I hope the best for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And CSCA President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report, but I did want to make a comment on major changes. And of course, the major change that happened last week, it was reflected back to me with some staff, that it did have an impact. And the impact is, there could be a pause in protocol. We actually try very much to follow protocol, simply because on both colleges, there is a document at each college about protocol and going up the chain. When there are major changes that can have that type of impact, sometimes that there isn't quite the communication to those who are impacted in certain departments and certain divisions. And so because of that, there is the feeling of, what do we do next? And so I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the Board of Trustees, that it is impactful, and there are those who are sensitive to major changes, and they would like to receive a communication to move forward as part of the operation of the district. So I just wanted to make that comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And back to Faculty Association.
Thank you for your respectful, thank you for respectfully waiting for me to return. There's no report tonight.
Thank you.
So that, so as you, as we alluded to, we, in respect for the public, came out of closed session as close as we could to 6:30.
Yeah.
We do have more work to continue. So we will come back out after closed session, but we won't have anything to report out, so there's no need for you to stick around to hear anything, other than us officially adjourning. We would have adjourned in normal times, in sadness. We honor Jason Schmidt and Kenzie Burbridge. Jason Schmidt was Saddleback's 2015 Alumnus of the Year and owner of JT Schmidt's Restaurant and Brewery. Died suddenly of a heart attack on Thursday, September 26th, at his home in Orange. He was 54 years old. Kenzie Burbridge's passing was reported during the second week in October. She's an Irvine Valley College student and 2019 graduate of Tribuco Hills High School. Our most sincere condolences are with those that knew and loved both Jason and Kenzie. So again, we will entertain a motion to recess to closed session.
So moved.
And hearing no objections, we will do so.